Good evening. All will be... Regular meeting for the City Council to December 12th, 2011 to order. Councilman Miller, would you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Please join me. The Pledge of Allegiance is to be delivered on the United States of America and in the Republic of North Dakota, where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For the City Clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Levitt.
Here.
Mayor Protan Miller.
Here.
Councilwoman Dayton.
Here.
Councilman Shanks.
Here.
Councilman Sloan.
Here. Thank you. Approval of agenda and waiver of full reading of resolutions and ordinances. We have quite a few of those this evening. By motion to the City Council, this is the time to notify the public of any changes to the agenda and/or rearrange the order of the agenda. Are there any, Miss City Manager?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. With respect to the consent calendar, Item D, which is the committee appointments, the Council has on the dais a request by the Mayor for the appointment of Jerry Grant as representative to District 5 for the local coastal general plan, Citizens Advisory Committee, for your consideration tonight. Also, with Item E, I'd like to request that we pull that item for consent calendar, that's the receipt of the annual financial statements for the year ended June 30th, 2011, for presentation by staff at our auditing firm. And then finally, Item K, which is under new business on the public memorial policy, that item, just as a reminder, was distributed to the Council in your Friday packet. It was also uploaded to the city's website, and our City Clerk has copies at her desk if any members of the public are interested, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. City Attorney?
I have no changes.
Any members of the Council?
I'd like to pull J, please.
I'd like to pull F and J. F and J.
F and J, okay. Items F and J have been pulled from the consent calendar for separate consideration. Are there any other items to be pulled? Motion to approve the agenda as amended. That passes 5-0. Special recognitions presentations. I understand some members that would be here have not arrived yet, so I think we'll take this out of order and go on to the Seal Beach Naval Weapons Station awards. Sorry, Jim. And I will read this. Seal Beach Naval Weapons Stations, 2012 Commander Navy Region Southwest Installation... It's going to be a while. This is a long resolution. Okay, yeah. Excellence Award for Small Installations and 2012 Navy Wide Installation Excellence Award for Small Installations, Commanding Officer Captain Terry Aubrey and Greg Smith... Oh, yes, Greg. Okay, will be accepting. Now I get to read all of this. The Seal Beach Navy Weapons Station was named the winner of the 2012 Commander Navy Region Southwest Installation Excellence Award for Small Installations and the 2012 Navy Wide Installation Excellence Award for Small Installations. The award recognizes Navy installations for outstanding and innovative efforts to improve a wide range of factors, including quality of life, efficiency, safety, and environmental sustainability. The base and its detachments competed against small U.S. Navy installations throughout both the continental United States and overseas. In November, the command was announced as the winner of the Navy Region Southwest Installation Excellence Award for Small Installations. The weapons station then competed against the best small bases from 11 other Navy regions, and on December 5th, it was announced that our very own Navy Weapons Station is the overall Navy-wide winner. Starting in 2007, the command had won repeated strings of Navy-wide awards in smaller specific categories, including housing, safety, energy, efficiency, and the environment. In the coming weeks, Seal Beach Navy Weapons Station will compete against the winner of the Navy Installation Excellence Award for Large Installations, Navy Air Station Jacksonville, Florida. The winner will represent the Navy at the Department of Defense level, going up against the best installations of the other armed forces. That competition is scheduled to be decided by January of 2012. On behalf of the City Council, I would like to extend congratulations on the outstanding recognitions. And Captain is here, and Greg, if you'd come forward.
I'm also cameraman tonight, so...
Seems like such a small award for all of that.
Thank you, sir. I set this on the map of the man who moved in the retro-living life station. I do a great service there, serving my country. Also, I thank this opportunity for everything you and Council members for all the outstanding, very, very strong community support we receive from Seal Beach, which is second to none, and also results in receiving this kind of reward. So, that's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. All right, we have the 2011 CIF-SS Division IAA Champions, Los Alameda Unified School District Girls Volleyball Team. And if I can have the coaches come forward. You're going to do all the work?
Yes, sir. Consider a training.
Amy Armstrong, come on up. Wong Arantes. The other members of the team that could not be here tonight, Sidney Bama, Shelby Burney, Geneva Crosley, Rachel Fetal, Corey Hunt, Chrissy Jones, Haley Lanford, Lindsay Lawmaster, Jojo Schnabel, Callie Taylor, Jaylen Villanueva, and Justine Wong Arantes. Oops, sorry, got it. I'd like to thank everybody for their recognition and support.
Mayor, if I could, the Superintendent for the Los Alameda Unified School District, Dr. Sherri Croft, in the audience, and I'm sure she might like to say a few words in recognition of her students.
We have one photograph, and Dr. Anne, and the two attorneys, that I know here.
And I'll just say briefly, while I'm getting ready for the picture, just thank you for this recognition, and Mr. Huber, thank you, we really appreciate all your work, and girls, good job to all of you, and thank you for the support of Seal Beach.
If Joe Bailey would come forward and make that presentation. Are you growing a mustache?
Looks like he is already, doesn't it?
I've changed my facial huff style, just a little bit. Honorable Mayor, City Council, tonight, we have actually two awards we're giving, and the first one, we're going to bring up Isaac and Peter DeSoto. So, guys, come on up. And this first award is for a patch contest that they entered this summer through the United States Lifeguard Association. So, they designed a patch, and there were some rules with this patch. They had to be three by four inches, but most importantly, they had to use US Lab safety tips. And since I have you as a captive audience for a second, I'm going to read those beach safety tips out real quick. So, swim near a lifeguard, learn to swim, never swim alone, don't fight the current, swim sober, leash your board, don't float where you can't swim, life jackets equal boating safety, don't dive headfirst, protect your neck, and at home, you're the lifeguard. So, Peter and Isaac both designed their own patch, and those patches were the best in Seal Beach, so we took those to the California Surf Life Saving Association, where they picked the best out of that, and they go to the United States Lifeguard Association competition. So, for these guys doing that for the California Lifeguard Association and designing these patches, they get awarded, I believe it's a $100 scholarship. So, each of them get a $100 scholarship, and I have Ryan Toulay, our Lifeguard Association President, one of your part-time lifeguards, and he's going to present those checks to Isaac and Peter. All right, good job, guys. So, the second award tonight is for, let me make sure I get this name right, Lachlan Keller. So, Lachlan, could you come up, please? So, you know, we presented this award at, come stand right here, Lachlan. So, we presented this award at the end of the Junior Guard Program, and it's for our Junior Lifeguard of the Year for the City of Seal Beach. And so, he got this award, and I'm going to read the award real quick, but then, we take those awards for the Seal Beach Junior Lifeguard of the Year and take them out of the state level, where we enter him in that competition, and he didn't actually get the top state junior lifeguard, but he's still our Seal Beach Junior Lifeguard of the Year, and his mom actually missed the Junior Lifeguard banquet and didn't get a photo, and so we were glad to have this opportunity to get a photo for him getting this award. But let me read this to you real quick for our Lachlan, who is our Seal Beach Junior Lifeguard of the Year. Over the summer, Lachlan has showed many qualities that qualify him for Junior Lifeguard of the Year. Lachlan shows great leadership, not only among our individual group, but the entire Junior Lifeguard Program. Lachlan shows great sportsmanship in all areas of the Junior Lifeguard Program, whether it be a fun game or a rigorous workout. He has shown himself to be very trustworthy, helpful, honest, outgoing, and inspiring. And there's some more there, and instead of reading it all, I think I'll move down to, he is motivated to work hard and always has a positive attitude, he takes direction well, has been an excellent example to others of what a junior lifeguard should be. So, we voted Lachlan our Junior Lifeguard of the Year, not on physical prowess, but on mainly attitude, and the best attitude of any of the kids in our program this year. And there's one story about him helping carry extra stuff, just, he didn't have any responsibility to, but he saw someone struggle, and he went back to help them, and he did stuff like that for us all summer, and that's why he won that award. So, Ryan's still up here, because we have a $200 scholarship from the California State Lifeguard Association for Lachlan Keller, who's our Junior Lifeguard of the Year.
Thank you, Chief. And lastly, we have special recognitions for the Salon Maritage shooting from October 12th, 2011. Chief Lumine, if you'll please come forward. There are four men that we'd like to acknowledge this evening. Unfortunately, only three were able to be here with us tonight. I'd like to invite Doug Childers, John Gallegos, and Brendan Peña to come down to the front of the chambers and form a line right off here to my right. Thank you, gentlemen. On a unseasonably hot day in Seal Beach, the lives of Doug Childers, John Gallegos, Brendan Peña, and Mark Sauerwin, as well as countless others, would forever be changed. Fate would place these men together on a job site a few hundred feet from the worst mass shooting in Orange County history. As the shooting started at the Salon Maritage, Mr. Childers and Mr. Gallegos, both former Marines, quickly recognized that the series of reports they were hearing were gunshots, and as it would turn out, they were being fired with deliberate vengeance. While most people would have sought the refuge of safety and cover, all of these men did just the opposite. They bravely started toward the sound of the gunfire, acting on the belief that people were in imminent danger. The pace of their approach quickened as each man felt a rising sense of urgency. As they got closer, they saw the gunman, and he saw them. The gunman slowly raised a handgun at the approaching group. They slowed briefly, but courageously did not stop. Mr. Childers, Mr. Gallegos, and Mr. Peña entered the salon to assess who might need medical aid. Mr. Sauerwin remained outside as a spotter. He was vigilant and pointed out the suspect, who was leaving in his truck, to the first police officer who arrived at the scene. This action ultimately led to the suspect's arrest. Despite Mr. Childers, Mr. Gallegos, and Mr. Peña's background as either emergency medical technicians or former Marine combat veterans, none were prepared for what they would see. The salon was inundated with the aftermath of senseless violence and destruction. These men cast aside fears that so many people would have about contacting bodily fluids and began actively assessing, treating, and comforting the people in the salon. These men knew that many victims were mortally injured, but they were not deterred. They did their best to save the lives of total strangers, not giving a thought to the possibility of a second gunman or the return of the shooter that they saw leaving. These selfless individuals set aside their personal safety and focused on the victims. They worked together to try and undo the senseless carnage perpetrated by a lone gunman, a man who acted with malicious disregard for human life. They elevated their status from men to heroes, and our community owes them a profound recognition and our deepest gratitude. The City of Seal Beach City Council, on behalf of the residents, would like to recognize and express their sincere gratitude and deepest appreciation to each of you gentlemen. As I call your name, if you'd please step to your left over here, so the Council can recognize and acknowledge you, and then if you would please return to your spot right here. So, the first will be Doug Childers. If you could just come around this way, Doug. If you gentlemen would just step out here a little bit further. I'd like to invite up any of the family members who would like to shake these gentlemen's Chief, thank you very much, and gentlemen, thank you again. Nothing that we can say up here expresses our gratitude. Yeah, I think Council will take a five-minute recess. Some more music. Want to get into Poncho Sanchez, and I think you're going to like this one. Am I going to do Poncho? No, I'm going to do Gerald Albright. I'll do Poncho a bit later on, and we're going to celebrate the season that is coming up in just a second. Thanks for listening to KJAS 88.1. It's a service of California State University, Long Beach. Be sure to join us every weekday morning at 6:00, and again, on your way home at 6:00 PM for Jazz at 6:00. It's an hour of great jazz without interruption on your way to work, and again, on your way home. Jazz at 6:00 every weekday morning and evening at 6:00 on KJAS 88.1.
Jazz at 6:00 every weekday morning and evening at 6:00 on KJazz 88.1.
At this time, members of the public may address the council regarding any items within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the council cannot discuss or take action on any items not on the agenda unless authorized by law. Matters not on the agenda may, at the council's discretion, be referred to staff and placed on a future agenda. Those members of the public wishing to speak are asked to come forward to the microphone. State their name for the record. All speakers will be limited to a period of five minutes. Any documents for review should be presented to the city clerk for distribution. Anyone who wishes to speak, please come forward.
Good evening. Thank you, council members in the City of Seal Beach for hearing me tonight. My name is Lisa Van Malsen, and I'm a resident. My daughter goes to Magaw Elementary School, and I've lived in this neighborhood, Surfside, for twenty-plus years. Like many of you in this room, I too lost a dear friend that day, two months ago. I'm here tonight on behalf of John Fox, who has started a campaign. He actually put us in with a Pepsi Challenge, and we're trying to win $50,000 to donate to the city for a permanent monument, and I know that you've already been talking, Sean Crumbie and I, through regular updates, John and he, we were aware of this plan, and John actually put in for this, and we were approved to be in the running for this challenge. And it's a Pepsi Challenge. They give a million dollars away every year, December 1st through the 31st, and it's all based on voting. And what you need to do basically is vote for Seal Beach. We are competing for a $50,000 grant through the PepsiRefreshEverything.com. All we're asking for as our community is to do is vote. It's very simple. What you have to do is go to Pepsi. There's three ways to vote. You can go to PepsiRefresh.com, and I've actually brought in some paperwork for, if you'd like to distribute it for them. We are competing for a $50,000 grant through PepsiRefreshEverything.com. All we're asking is our community to do is vote. Vote for the $50,000 that will come as a free grant, not from our pockets, not from any strings attached. It's an easy way for free, way to show your support and love for Seal Beach. After years of donating grants for the communities around the nation, this month is the last season of grants for Refresh Everything. This is our last opportunity, so we couldn't wait. We had to stand by. We couldn't wait. We had to, we had to apply. Tonight, we'd like to spread awareness to the community, and we need the vote to guarantee our winning. So we'd like to write a check for $50,000 to the city, and everyone who voted will know that they did their little part to help out the community to heal. We look for an opportunity to start a dialogue and try to get something out there. I don't know if you're familiar, but the Patch is actually doing a poll right now, and they're trying to get people's ideas on what they would like to do for a permanent monument and where they would like to have this monument be placed, and this $50,000 will be just a starting point for us to have that extra money moving forward. I saw the poll just today on the Patch, and there's about eight great ideas. So with, please, if we could just get people to spread the word around, if you just vote one vote a day, you can actually vote three times for Seal Beach. You can vote email, you can vote text message, and you can also sign into Pepsi Challenge and vote for Seal Beach. It's a really simple way, and it's all based on numbers. So if we can just spread the word and get people to just send that quick text every day at the end of December, the funds, the organizations that raise the most votes are the ones that they'll distribute the funds to. So please, if we could just ask that we spread the word, the money, there's no strings attached, the money will be given straight to the City of Seal Beach, and what we want to do is, we don't want any of these people to be forgotten ever. We want their grandkids and their grandkids and their grandkids to know that Seal Beach was their home. And that's, like I said, I'm doing it for my friends' grandkids that aren't even here yet. So if we can just get this going, it's free $50,000. Seal Beach has just as good an opportunity to win as anyone else. All we need to do is spread the word and vote. I've been trying to go to the younger groups with the texting and the Facebook and all of that, and like I said, if we can get this going viral within the next two weeks, we should be able to get in the running for the $50,000. So we'll keep you posted, and we'll be hoping to deliver that check to you soon. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Yes, sir. Come forward. Nothing so formal as raising your hand. Just come forward.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Gene Rosen, eleven Westminster, and I'm a current member of the 2011-2012 Grand Jury. I'm going to read this, this will lead you. My purpose tonight is to seek your help and assistance in our recruitment campaign for next year's Grand Jury. We, we want to continue to preserve the Grand Jury integrity by encouraging qualified citizens to apply for the Grand Jury service. We are actively soliciting participation in each of the five supervisors' areas via the mediums like this, and television, and radio, particularly in the Little Saigon area, which we've had very, very poor response from. Our goal is to provide the citizens of Orange County with a Grand Jury, which will serve the people as an exemplary watchdog over governmental affairs and officials, which is an internal part of the criminal indictment process. Grand Jury is a body of the county, of the county citizens appointed by Superior Court judges after a series of interviews, background checks, and that's quite extensive when you go through that, I'll tell you. Grand Jury has a mandatory requirement, which I just talked to the chief earlier about, is to inspect all the detention facilities in Orange County during our one-year. Unfortunately, that's my assignment. We recently inspected your facilities, and it is outstanding, and they have outstanding, highly qualified people there. The gentleman we dealt with, George Jack, you're right, is really, really knowledgeable and does a good job. The jury's civil responsibilities are to act as the public's watchdog by investigation and reporting upon the affairs of local government, investigate allegations of misconduct and malfeasance of public officials, and to respond to public and planning letters, in which we get a lot of. The civil watchdog investigations require about seventy percent of our time. The jury is permitted to examine and investigate all aspects of county, city, government, including special districts, to ensure the entire county is governed honestly and efficiently. Quite frankly, I've lived in Orange County for more years than I want to talk about, and I assumed a lot of things. I'm finding out now, don't assume. The jury's criminal responsibilities include hearing indictments requested, presented by the district attorney, and may and be for such matters as homicides, credit card and real estate fraud, YNCOP tax evasion, money laundering, and it goes on. We've had numerous already. The complex and diverse responsibilities of a Grand Jury requires a serious commitment of a person's time. Once you commit yourself, you're there for one year. The things that really stand out in your mind are the numbers of letters that we get on complaints. It's astonishing. Statutory requirements are, you have to be eighteen years of age, a U.S. citizen, resident of Orange County for the previous year, no felony convictions, and you can read, write, and understand English, and I tell you, quite frankly, this is presenting a problem to us. The Grand Jury consists of a foreman and eighteen additional members, and we're committed to the following: a full one-year service. We work five days a week, with varying hours, and usually, people may want to mislead you. If you put in a fifty-hour week, you've had a short week. You're paid a whole $50 a day, plus mileage. You do get secured under parking, under the courthouse, and we work, nineteen of us work as one with respect and accountability. You have some weekends of duty, you have some night duties, and you have some local traveling might come in here. If you're civic-minded and eager to work in committees and want to promote sound government, we would very much like to have you put in for the Grand Jury for the following year. It's an interesting challenge. It's rewarding. The term is from July 1st, 2012, to June 30th, 2013. I've left some applications with the clerk, and I want to thank you for allowing me to speak before you. We hope that you can help us out.
Thank you very much.
I have a question.
One question.
When are the applications due? By January 13th. Thank you.
Ms. Edison?
Good evening. Janal Gajis from Southern California Edison. Happy holidays. I'm here to present on Edison Smart Connect. If you'll recall, I came back, I came here about a year ago, letting you know about Phase One of Edison's Smart Connect, where we changed out the old analog meters to new smart meters. This evening, I'm here to present on Phase Two, so it's quite an accomplishment. I want to give thanks to the community of Seal Beach. It went off literally without a hitch, so we're very, very happy. There are now some great benefits that are going to be available to customers now that they have the new Smart Connect meter. For instance, 24/7 access. Customers are able to now go online and look at their previous day usage. For residential customers, you can look on an hourly level basis, and for business customers, fifteen-minute intervals. Never before has that been enabled for customers. Second one, budget assistance. Customers are able to go online and select a monthly goal target. We can contact you however you would like, either by text message, email, or by automated voice message, and let you know however often you would like throughout the month to be updated on whether or not you are on target to meet that goal. That can be very beneficial for customers that might be struggling to pay their bills. Save Power Day incentive. Customers can sign up to have email, voice, or text words about upcoming Save Power Day events. If you reduce your energy usage, you can earn up to $100 in bill credits per year. More reliable service. Smart meters now keep the electric system reliable by helping Edison pinpoint outage locations for faster service restorations. Meters actually send a signal to us, letting us know that somebody needs to be sent out and check the meter. Remote activation. How often have we been accustomed to waiting from eight to noon or one to five to have somebody come turn on or turn off our service? We can now do that remotely for customers, so there's no more waiting at home in the mornings or afternoons. Future benefits. As we know, technology's coming, and it's coming at a fast pace. We are working very closely with manufacturers to help appliances communicate with the smart meters. I do want to point out that we don't know on an individual basis for your appliances, what you use, what you don't use. We just look at your overall consumption. However, the meters have the ability to communicate with the appliances. So with that together, we can help to reduce greenhouse gases and hopefully reduce the need to build more power plants. If you have any questions, I'm more than happy to answer, but I did present. Easy for you to say, right? All the information to the city clerk. So with that, Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays, and thanks again for a wonderful year. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Stay away from the eggnog, okay?
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. I did have a set of questions on the bus bench contract, item J, and I understand that's been pulled. And Mayor, I was wondering if I could hold my five minutes until after our staff report on that, because I expect many of my questions would be answered, if I may do that.
Sure.
Thank you very much.
Anyone else for public comment? All right. Seeing none, I declare oral communications are closed. Mr. City Attorney, can I do a report?
Nothing but Happy Holidays for everyone in Seal Beach and to the City Council.
Ms. City Manager.
Yes, Mayor and Council, I have a couple items tonight. We have an exciting enhancement to our council meetings that we're pleased to report to you starting in January. As the council will recall during the budget sessions, you approved an allocation of funds to support video streaming of our council meetings on our website. So I'm pleased to announce that project's now complete, and we'll be implementing that with our first council meeting in January. What that will do for the public is it'll allow them to view our council meetings live via our website, as well as access the website for archived video meetings as well in the future on demand. Again, this service is intended to increase citizen access to both city council and Planning Commission meetings that are televised via SPTV3, and I'd like to commend our city clerk, Linda Devine. Again, this is a project that's above and beyond her regular and normal work duties, and she spent a significant amount of time working with a consultant to get this up and live and successful. I know she's been attending meetings for tests on it to make sure that it works when we implement it, so thanks to Linda.
Thank you, Linda.
Second thing I have is this Wednesday, December 14th, at seven o'clock in the Magaw Auditorium is our annual holiday dance recital. It's a culmination of all participants in our recreation dance classes from ages two and a half through adult, and they'll be providing free entertainment and fun this Wednesday night, and I'm sure that they would appreciate a full auditorium there to showcase all of their talents. Third item tonight is, I wanted to remind, a reminder to the public, as we've done for the past few years, and with the council's blessing, we'll be closing City Hall for the holidays beginning Friday, December 23rd, and will reopen on Tuesday.
the holidays, beginning Friday, December twenty-third, and will reopen on Tuesday, January third of the new year. Emergency city services, the police department, marine safety, and the fire department obviously will be unaffected by the closure due to their twenty-four-seven responses, response time, and our city maintenance crews will be on standby in the event of any emergency. No street sweeping Monday, December twenty-sixth, or Monday, January second. Normal street sweeping operations will resume on January third. Trash collection will be delayed by one day throughout the holidays, and all city construction projects, which I know our citizens will appreciate, will be delayed through the holiday closure. The building department will be available for inspections only during the holiday closure, and residents can call the inspection line to schedule an inspection at (562) 594-8553. I think it's important to note that this is a time when employees are using their own time. The city closure is not a free time for employees to take off. It's important because it decreases the city's liability with respect to accrued employee vacation time, and it also gives non-public safety staff, as well as the council, an opportunity to spend time with our families when city business is especially slower. And so I'd like to thank and commend the council for your support of this effort again this year. With that, I'd like to sincerely wish the council, the staff, the community, and those in the audience a safe and happy holiday season, and I look forward to working with all of you in the new year. And finally, I hope, Mayor, that I'm not going to embarrass you, but I'd like to wish you a happy birthday on Wednesday. Thank you.
No, you wouldn't embarrass me a bit, no. We just won't go into anything further like the number of candles. That would start a fire. All right, thank you. Any council comments?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I also would like to wish everyone a very Merry Christmas and Happy Holidays. And I did want to bring out an incident. When the freeways were being organized for construction, it was determined that in College Park West, it would cut off paramedic and fire. So the city, to alleviate the situation, worked out a mutual agreement with the city of Long Beach. And now Long Beach responds into College Park West as a first responder. Now unfortunately, we had a chance to test that system the other night. A little boy got hit by a car, and the Long Beach Fire Department and the fire engine and the paramedic responded into College Park West as first responders, were there right away. Now, the really good news is that little boy is a tough little critter, because with all of his bumps and bruises and everything, he's going to make it. And his name is Shane, and Shane, I wish you that would get well fast, because we need you back in the streets again.
Yeah, I want to, like everyone else, wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year, or Happy Holidays, I'm supposed to say, but, you know, political correctness being what it is. But anyway, be safe over the holidays, and don't drive drunk, and have a good New Year and a safe New Year. Yeah, I'd like to wish everyone a Happy Hanukkah, a Merry Christmas, and a Happy New Year.
Thank you, Gary.
Okay, I have a few things. I wanted to make everyone aware that our draft EIR on the DWP is out, it's online, and the hearings will be mostly this week on the draft EIR in several very important committees. Tomorrow night, it will be the EQCB Board, and on Wednesday night, it'll be Archaeology, and on Thursday night, it'll be DWP. I believe Tuesday night and Wednesday night start at six, and Thursday night, six-thirty. And then after that, I would like to thank Todd Gavot and our police department for beginning a new Neighbor for Neighbor program. We met down at the pier with Todd, and we are looking to jumpstart that in the new year, so listen for that and be ready to participate. It's both a neighborhood watch-type program and an emergency disaster preparedness program. Then I'd like to thank Lion Ray Longoria and his team for the continued graffiti removal. As soon as they get a complaint in that there's graffiti, they have it removed within twenty-four to forty-eight hours. It's truly an amazing community service, so thank you for that. And I would like to thank Scott Newton and all those behind the scenes of a wonderful parade, even though our fire truck kind of petered out, huh? Yeah. And then thanks to Laura Ellsworth and Tim Kelsey and their teams for a great Christmas tree lighting. And Tim, I just want to especially thank you for all the time that you put into making our community what it is. You're truly a wonderful neighbor and friend, and you work really hard for the city, and I really appreciate it. And with that, I would like to say Happy Hanukkah on the twentieth, Merry Christmas on the twenty-fifth, Happy New Year, and we won't be back at this until next year. So thank you very much.
And I'm just going to echo all their thoughts, the same thing. Merry Christmas, have a Happy Hanukkah, and a very safe and sane New Year, and we will see you, we're not done yet, but we'll see you all. We could be, wouldn't that be a record? See you all in 2012.
Hey, Mike, I was going to ask, I forgot to ask when I was talking. Is there a chance to videotape the DWP meetings that come up this week? We haven't had that on the agenda yet to decide if we're going to videotape the meetings, but there are like three important meetings coming up. It'd be nice to have an audio tape of that.
Are we prepared to do that physically? We have the mechanical means to do that now? All right, thank you. And we have any council comments? Any council matters? None? All right, and we on to the consent calendar. Items on the consent calendar are considered to be routine and enacted by a single motion, with the exception of the items previously moved by the council, and those are Items F and J, and City Manager, you pulled E. All right. Have a vote?
So it's our motion to approve the consent calendar.
So moved.
And before the vote, on Item I, Councilmember Sloan will abstain on that item. It's the issue regarding the Studebaker improvements, the Route 22 improvements, and even though there's probably not an actual conflict, to avoid any appearance of impropriety, he's abstaining, and so the record will reflect his abstention.
All right, all vote please. And that passes five oh.
But that one exception on, there's an abstention on Item I.
Items removed from the consent calendar. Item F, Gary?
Does Item E come first?
City Manager. Gary has alluded to you.
Yes, Mayor, thank you. Our Assistant City Manager, Sean Crumbie, will introduce this item, and we also have in the audience with us tonight Brian Gruber from our auditing firm, who will be assisting in the presentation as well. Sean?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Council. Item E on the agenda brings forward seven items to be received and filed by the city. These seven items represent annual reports and letters related to fiscal year that ended in June thirty-eleven. These documents were prepared by our staff in conjunction with Lance Solen-Lundergaard, excuse me, in a pre-audit in July and an audit here at the city in September. So with that, I'd like to introduce Brian Gruber. He'll be making a presentation regarding some of these items. Also, Shally Lynn, our finance director, is here to answer any technical questions that you have.
Again, my name is Brian Gruber, and I'm with LSL CPAs, the independent auditors for the city of Seal Beach. And I'm here this evening to communicate a little bit about the audit process and present the audited financial statements for the city and redevelopment agency for the fiscal year ended June thirty, 2011. To give you a little bit of background on the audit process, we conduct our audit in a couple different key phases. The first is a pre-audit, which we perform during the month of July, and the key purpose of this audit is to obtain an understanding and tests of the internal controls that are in place at the city. Internal controls being those safeguards that the city has in place to secure its assets and ensure correct financial reporting. We also perform tests on these internal controls, and we do this with the purpose of, for our final visit, when we actually perform our tests on the financial statements, we use this in conjunction as a planning tool. For our final visit, we conducted during the month of September, which we perform a series of tests on the financial statements. And this is really to express an opinion on the financial statements, that they're fairly stated in all material respects. We perform some, a series of tests, for example, sending out confirmations to, third-party confirmations to all the cash and investments the city reports, and a series of other line items presented in the financial statements in footnotes. We do this all to, like I said earlier, to express an opinion on the financial statements. We also conduct a series of compliance tests specifically over the redevelopment agency and express our opinion on its compliance. The results of our audit are really communicated through three key pieces of communication which have been provided to you this evening. The first of which is an audit communication letter, and in this letter, we talk a little bit about the audit process, we talk about the responsibilities of the auditor, we talk about the responsibilities of those charged with governance. We also use this form to communicate any issues that we identify as part of the audit process. If there were to be any disagreements with management or any disagreements with financial reporting, we would disclose it in this letter. Pleased to report, we didn't have any disagreements, and overall, it was a successful audit, which we communicated. We did identify a few additional communication topics which we noted throughout the audit. The first piece is that the city implemented Governmental Accounting Standards Board Statement Number Fifty-four. What this had to do with is it changed the presentation of the way the city reports its fund balances and its financial statements. For example, some of the terminology and definitions changed, and you'll see a little bit difference in reporting when you compare it from year to year and take a look at the fund balance. Another item is that, as a result of a lot going on with redevelopment agencies in the state of California, there's been some additional compliance areas that we noted, and we provided some specific items on annual reporting, which the city should include in its June thirty, 2011 financial statements, which need to be presented by December thirty-first in accordance with Health and Safety Code. We also noted that as part of these additional compliance areas, that the city should include in its budget an examination of the previous year's achievements and comparisons with its goals and objectives as part of the budget. Another piece of communication during the audit process is what we call the management letter. And this is where we're required to report any deficiencies in internal control or any areas of compliance. Pleased to report that we didn't report any deficiencies in internal control. We did have a couple areas in related to compliance of the redevelopment agency, which have been provided in this letter. The first, which had to do with annual reporting requirements, the city has provided a response, and they've corrected that item, took action on October tenth to remedy that finding. The second area was in adoption of a five-year implementation plan for the redevelopment agency. The city has also corrected that and took action on June thirteenth, and then the plan was adopted. That's the communication of the management letter. The third piece of communication, which is really the most important communication as part of the audit process, is our expression of our opinion. This is where we would express our opinion, that the financial statements are properly stated. We expressed an unqualified opinion on the financial statements. This would be the equivalent of a clean bill of health, financially speaking, and overall is the best opinion that you can receive in a financial audit, so that's positive results. We did, in our opinion, note to one particular footnote reference, which has to do with the California redevelopment agency's uncertainties footnote disclosure that we referenced as a significant consideration as part of the audit report. I would like to say that that footnote was updated, and you were provided that communication separately. So there was some updated wording to make it a little bit more current and a little bit more descriptive in certain areas, so I would like to mention that. To briefly kind of go over the results of the financial statements and kind of see how the city is doing, a good indicator on the financial health of the city is how net assets, are they increasing or decreasing over time? The city's net assets increased for the year by approximately one million dollars, which is a positive sign of good financial health. I will say that the city's governmental fund activities, that its expenses exceeded its revenues by about five-point-three million dollars as a result of planned projects for storm drain improvements, local paving programs, facility improvement capital projects. The city's general fund reported unassigned fund balance of sixteen million dollars, which is about sixty percent of annual expenditures of the general fund. This is a little bit different reporting than you're accustomed to in the past, and that's specifically related to the implementation of GASB Statement Fifty-four. This sixteen million dollars includes a few different things which had been broken out in previous years, but didn't meet the definition of the change in definitional terms of GASB Statement Fifty-four. One of those areas would be the economic uncertainty that's set aside at one million seven-hundred-and-fifty thousand, about a twenty, twenty-five percent fiscal policy which is set aside, and that also includes any unassigned fund balance policy that the city has in place. As a result of the implementation of GASB Statement Fifty-four, and, you know, just in light of economic conditions and how a lot of cities have been doing over the last few years, a lot of cities have used this opportunity to review their policies, to make sure they're more fully compliant with GASB Statement Fifty-four, to make sure that the goal and the purpose of GASB Statement Fifty-four is to make things a little bit more apparent on the financial statements as far as resources that are available. You know, there's certain resources that are restricted for certain purposes, certain resources that are committed for other purposes, through action that the city council takes and intentions of the city council for certain projects. So a lot of cities have used this opportunity to review its fund balance and how it's being presented in the financial statements in accordance with GASB Fifty-four. Also, in light of economic conditions, a lot of cities have reviewed their minimum fund balance policies of unassigned fund balance, you know, and they've looked at upping those in certain areas to about thirty to fifty percent of annual expenditures. Annual expenditures this year were about twenty-five million dollars in the general Overall, that concludes my presentation. I'm available, Shally's available for any questions that you might have, but other than that, it was a successful audit and positive results.
One thing I would like to remind the council is that this item is a combined meeting of the council, RDA, and our finance committee.
May I remind the council, you have to receive and file this report as of December thirty-first, based on the requirements for the audit requirements. So I just want to remind the members of council, this item had to be received and filed.
I have a few. You say that in order to conform to the GASB Statement Fifty-four, that what should our reserves be at part, what percent of our annual expenditures?
Well, it's different for different agencies, and it really is contingent upon a lot of different factors. Currently, the city's policy is that unassigned, or previously termed, undesignated fund balance, that that should be for the city about twenty to twenty-five percent of annual expenditures. A lot of cities, as a result of different uncertainties, have, you know, wanted to set aside additional funds due to uncertainties of certain revenue sources, so certain agencies have considered higher policies, anywhere between thirty and fifty percent. You know, GFPA, which is Government Finance Officers Association, would recommend at a very, very minimum that it be about twenty percent. That would be a bare, bare minimum standpoint, and that's a recommendation from GFPA. Like I said, other cities have considered a lot more, you know, in light of economic times.
And ours is between twenty and twenty-five, you said?
Twenty and twenty-five is what the city's policy is currently.
The other thing that I wanted to ask is, you said that our assets had increased by a million dollars this year, which sounds good, but then when I was going through the report, I saw that we actually, that would, those assets would be more like completed construction and things like that. assets would be more like completed construction and things like that, and doesn't have anything to do with the cash on hand, and that we were actually down $500,000 in sales tax and down overall about $200,000. Do I have my numbers about right?
Yeah, one of the complexities of governmental, especially city accounting, is that there's a couple of different statements, and there's a couple different bases of accounting. The statement that I referred to, which your net assets increased by $1 million, is a statement of net assets, which is, covers the citywide operations, and it's on a full accrual basis of accounting. So to basically, to sum up that, the difference is, is that those items are shown as capital assets on that statement in assets and not in expenditure. The more appropriate test would be look at your governmental funds, which I said were down about 5.3 million. So your expenditures exceeded your revenues last year by about 5.3 million as a result of some planned projects. Those planned projects don't get shown as an expense on that other statement. So it's a little bit different reporting to look at it those in those ways. On a cash basis, you'd be more looking at your expenditures were over by about 5.3 million.
Well, you know, I'm not so worried about planned expenditures like that, you know, like the 5.3 million, because those were planned, and that's what you have your savings for, and is when you plan something. But what really concerns me is, where are we as far as our operation budget is concerned? On the monies that we bring in and the monies that we put out? And where are we there?
Well, if you take, I think what you're asking is, one of the schedules is a budgetary schedule, which would show what the city's planned budget revenues were to what it actually received?
Okay, well, that's a start, because it's, some of it's revenue and some of it's expenditures. And where did we line up? Did we live within our means?
Yeah.
Just the bottom line.
The city's general fund did not, its final budget was of revenue, actual revenue received was less than what it actually budgeted for, by about $200,000. The city did plan for a budgetary fund balance of $23 million and ended up with $26 million as a result of some expenditures in certain areas. So, answer your question.
How much did we take in and how much did we spend?
The city's general fund took in $27 million, and it spent, it was in the negative of about $6 million.
With the planned projects?
With the planned projects. If you look at $27 million compared to normal operating expenses, it was $25 million, so there was about a $2 million surplus.
Okay, so that's actually, that's good news then.
Depending on how you look at those planned capital expenditures.
Yes, well, but if the council, in their discussions, decided that that was where they wanted to put them, which, by the way, was mostly in infrastructure, so, I mean, it was a good, solid investment. If you've planned it, it's not like all of a sudden, you're just spending money that you hadn't planned, and that's a whole different.
Those resources would be coming out of some of those assignments of fund balance that we were talking about earlier with GASB statement 54. We assign certain amounts for capital projects, or, for example, there's $4.8 million set aside for a swimming pool and some other street improvements that are set aside. That's how that would come across. So it's coming out of existing, you know, accumulated resources for specific projects.
Okay, I think that's all I have. Thank you.
I was just going to go back and, when we met last week, the reserves are $16 million. And of the $16 million, a certain portion has to be dedicated to loans such as the fire station, but our real amount, as I remember, is about $5 million of discretionary unassigned.
That's called a 5 point, about 5.2 million and assigned.
And we also have another fund of money over that we shifted out and designated. The vehicle replacement program has about $2.6 million right now?
Somewhere around 2.2, yeah.
So we really have about, if you call that designated, or don't call it designated, we have about $7.5 million available, if we had to use it for something.
Right. Except, I would just kind of want to express my opinion as a finance director. Equipment replacement fund, of course, is designated, it's called an internal service fund, is allocated throughout the departments for services on equipment needs, especially for the vehicles, for police officers' vehicles and so forth, and any of the equipments we need for public work projects. And those are the funds we set aside. Current fiscal year budget, we're going to allocate any equipment replacement fund. We decided, the council and the mayor make the decision, we're not charging any department for equipment replacement funds. So the fund staying was in the equipment replacement fund. So next year, if you have a vehicle, so equipment needs to be replaced, that will be where the funds you're going to be allocating and designated to take it out to replacing the vehicle or equipments. So that's why we designate, that's called a designate fund balance for purpose of certain purposes. So just kind of remind the council, that's part of it. You've got to remember, if you designate, that you want it and designate, it will take actions from the mayor and council.
I only said that because we created that fund out of reserves, just moved it over there, because in theory, each department donates the money that gets their vehicles, and this was kind of just a buffer fund, where you take money out, but you put it back in, so.
That's correct. Unless you want to just allocate it within the operation budget year, when you needed the vehicle, and then you would be just charging the full amount for the equipment you need.
Well, the reason I originally made the original statement, I didn't want somebody to think we had $16 million worth of reserves we could use spend.
That's correct.
Thank you.
That's correct. Thanks.
Any other questions?
All right. Staff's recommendation is that we receive and file. Is that correct?
Yes, and I think staff's recommendation also at this point, given our auditor's recommendation on fiscal policies and reserve policies, is that perhaps after the mid-year budget review, I don't think it's appropriate, maybe at this time until after we've gotten through the mid-year budget review, to see a snapshot of where we're at at that particular time, and then we can talk about between mid-year budget review and the actual development of next year's budget, that we bring back some recommendations on fiscal and reserve policies.
All right. And so once there's a motion to receive and file, it'll be reflected for all three bodies?
Correct.
The city council, the finance authority, and the redevelopment agency.
All right. Please vote, receive and file. All right, now, item F.
Item F. The reason I pulled item F was that the council will probably not remember this, but in 2008, I'd recommend that we maybe, we should consider this maybe as a city operation for the benefit of the city, the funds that we were going to be giving to the contractor. And back in 2008, I actually recommended maybe we can reconsider that, or we terminate after one year. And if we'd done that, we would be ahead about at least half a million dollars roughly. So I encourage staff to, as they plan to do, I believe, to take this over as a city operation, and I think the city's going to have funds that are going to come out of this. In three years, we may have another half a million dollars we've earned, and it'd also give a job maybe to someone if we're reorganizing, there'll be a space for someone to do some work for the city. I just wanted to encourage the city manager to make this a city operation as soon as possible. With that, I would.
I think, again, and we've discussed this already, but just for the benefit of the public and the rest of the council, with the month-to-month option, this gives us the benefit before the end of the calendar year, and an automatic one-year extension with AMCO, it gives us the ability to look at different options and then come back to you with those options after the first of the year.
All right. Okay, with that, I recommend we receive and file this.
Actually, there's a resolution to adopt, oh, sorry. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution approving the agreement?
Vote please.
All right, that carries, 5-0. Item J.
I think, oh, I pulled J.
Yeah, I have a couple of concerns about J. Went out and did some driving around and saw that our bus benches already have plenty of signage all over them, and called Sean and wanted to know, well, what are we doing here if we've already got them all out there? And Sean, you want to address that issue first? I love your Wild West quote, so you can use that.
Maybe I can provide some background information regarding the history of our bus stops and bus benches. Our transit companies provide bus service, OCTA and Long Beach Transit, but at the location where the buses stop, they only provide signage. They do not provide any amenities for the patrons that use those bus systems. So the city did execute a franchise agreement in relation to bus shelters. The company that has that agreement is Clear Channel Outdoors, and they provide shelters where economically feasible. They provide the maintenance, they install those shelters, and they pay the city a franchise fee. I believe the franchise we've gotten, the minimum fee has not been exceeded in the last four, five years, but that fee is just over $49,000 per year. At the stops in which shelters were not installed, the city has never regulated any sort of seating length that they're, I've called it the Wild West, because as being unregulated, benches just magically appear. We have no control over items like disabled access, the maintenance of those shelters, the type of advertising that's on there. And so what this agreement does is seeks to gain control of some of those things. In addition, provide the city with a lot of funding out of that advertising. The funding, albeit it's not going to be at the level that the shelters is, because the type of advertising is different, but it will provide some funding for the city. I also would like to point out that Michael Culver, the owner for Coastline Advertising, is in the audience, and he's available to answer any questions that you might have. Let me just state that tonight's action is the first reading of an ordinance, and on January 9th, we'd be coming back for a second reading, which we'd also be conducting a public hearing. So the public would have a chance to comment at that time in relation to this. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions, yeah.
Okay, thank you. So with that, so as I understand it, what's happening is, people are just bringing benches to our town, dropping them off and allowing advertising to go on them. Okay, so that's obviously something we don't want, especially with our ADA requirements. The other thing that I'm concerned about is that I would not want any signage and stuff on bus benches that would be within residential areas, and any home or anything should not be able to look onto any advertising, and I'd like to see if we could get that added into the, into the contract. And then, thirdly, as Sean, you know, we've had problems with our bus benches in Old Town because we have such a high visitor-serving population. They come, they eat, they leave their food on the bus benches, they change their babies and leave their diapers behind, and it's just a really filthy condition. And so I would like to make sure that we include trash cans and all into the contract for that, and that would be a very good way for us to help keep our city cleaner.
These sorts of requests were exactly why we wanted to bring this to council. By regulating and controlling the bus bench contract, we can now control where the benches go and trash cans and those sorts of things with those facilities. We have had discussion with the owner of Coastline Advertising, and he's very amenable to helping the city out with any of these conditions. He's offered to put trash cans up wherever we request. Of course, the cost of that will be coming out of the revenues that we are generating from this contract, but it will not be at a cost to the city. So all of those sorts of things can be added. And if there are locations where the public or the council does not want to see a bus bench, then final means we will not be adding those. And we certainly do not have any requirements as to number of seats or any required spots. It's all based on what the city, what the city wants.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Karen.
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. First of all, how will this coordinate with Clear Channel? Clear Channel has the shelters at this time. How will this contract coordinate with that? It's listed in a pending C or attachment C, and it lists those shelters. Now, how will this coordinate with that? The shelters do have benches with them, don't they?
They have benches on the interior of the shelters, that's correct.
So they won't be doing those particular, bus stops won't be part of this contract? We will have competition between the two or anything like that?
This contract is meant to piggyback onto that contract. So where the bus stops do not have amenities, this contract will pick up and provide amenities, albeit of just a seating nature, but for the bus stop patrons.
Right. I took for the council, I just took a couple pictures. Seal Beach, your attachment C is incorrect. There are only two benches on all of Lampsen. There's one by West Ed, which is the one that looks like a park bench here, and then there's the one with an advertisement on it that's in front of Sunrise Facilities. Now, can you just remove a bench? If somebody puts a bench down, can you just take it up and move it off? I mean, is that right now, is the advertisement in front of Sunrise?
Technically, right now, we can pick up and remove a bench. It's not been permitted. We have never gone through and regulated the benches, we just haven't done that.
Well, my thoughts on, at least, I didn't want to see, personally, I wouldn't want to see Lampsen on this schedule, because it is a residential area. You don't have a house right across the street, but it is a residential area. And we do have the one at West Ed that's there, and we do have the one in front of Sunrise, and I imagine the one at Sunrise may be used by the people that live at Sunrise. So I'm not suggesting to take those out, but the other ones that you've listed, where you say there are benches, there are no benches in College Park East and that whole area. So I personally wouldn't like to see that as part of this. I consider these as mini billboards, and I think they're fine in the commercial area, and I think they're fine in the industrial area. And I'd just like to see, I don't know about Electric Avenue, I wouldn't think you'd want them on Electric Avenue, but definitely on Lampsen, I prefer not to have even part of this document. And then there's, you don't have, we need one later we'll ask. I guess the other thought I had is, a 10-year contract, it seems that Clear Channel has a bigger investment than a bench in the shelters, and they only wanted a five-year contract. And I'm kind of wary of a 10-year contract, because it's a long-term contract. And I just don't see the economic need. A bench is not that expensive. In fact, I feel the city could put the benches in, and you talk about 20% of something. Now, to tolerate having a billboard, if you will, or as many billboard, 20% of what? Are we talking that we're going to get $100 a year off each bench? I mean, there comes a point where you say, I don't want that on my bench, I just want a bench, and the benches, and I asked the park recreation today, the benches that we just come to basketball court are only $400. I mean, the city could put its own benches on the bus stops that we want them. So it's a question of how much revenue will we make? $49,000 is attractive, but how much are we going to make on these benches? You didn't say how much, 20%, of what?
It's going to be significantly lower than the $49,000, particularly in the beginning of this contract.
And do you have any idea, as an example, attachment C is incorrect, do you have any idea how many benches you have right now that can be replaced?
We have not done that inventory. Attachment C was intended to provide opportunities for benches, not necessarily a hard inventory of where all the benches would go. This agreement is intended to provide flexibility for us to make those decisions, but there will be one vendor that has the sole right to place the benches throughout the city.
I mean, but are we signing a contract, we're going to end up with 10 benches? That's all, or?
Well, I think we can make that decision. We'll take a look at each situation individually and make a decision on whether or not a bench can go there. And if the desire is not to have benches on Lampsen, then by all means, we won't include Lampsen in the contract.
And maybe in January, we can have an estimate of what type of income you can expect from the benches?
Okay, thank you.
I have another question. I'm sorry, Robert. Sean, isn't there a public service part to this also?
There is a component within this contract that allows the city to place public service ads onto the benches. Coastline Advertising will assist the city with preparation of ad materials on that, on the benches, and this is done at no cost to the city as part of the contract. And maybe Mike can, if you want to come up and address that?
That's the approach, is just one quick question. The benches are not, were not put there by the city, but were allowed to be there by the city. If something happens to someone... If something happens to someone using that bench, is the city liable?
Absolutely. And that's another thing that we are trying to get, gain with this contract, is we have one vendor that provides the city with insurance. We have our insurance requirements in there and we're insured for any of the situations that can happen out there. That's a great point.
Good evening. Yeah, regarding the public service, we're going to do the design at no cost and post the ads at no cost on locations that are available throughout the city. And there typically is always, you know, four to five sites throughout the city that are available. Any other questions regarding the program? And we operate in several cities in Orange County and have been going through the cities that have had old benches like our in Seal Beach and revamping and putting in more modern designs. It's increased the revenue and allowed the cities to enjoy some of that revenue, but the big cost is the maintenance of the bus stops. We visit every bus stop on a weekly basis, and that's really why most of the cities allow us to come in, because that cost just keeps going up and up. So on a weekly basis, we'll be at every single bus stop in the city. And if there's a problem with Clear Channel shelters or ours, we'll contact Clear Channel. We know who takes care of the trash for them and we kind of have a good relationship and a working relationship with them, so.
What is your average revenue off of one bench on an annual basis?
You know, we expect that Seal Beach with the new style benches in uniform and having exclusivity, it'll be around a hundred fifty dollars per bench per month. The current vendors in the market, including myself, get sixty-five dollars a bench, but it's because we're in competition of each other and it's because we haven't put out new structures because there's not a long-term contract in place. The new structures cost around a thousand dollars apiece. A bus shelter costs four thousand, so the cost is still very high for the new bus bench. And our maintenance costs, which again is really the whole cost on a weekly basis to visit each location, it's not just the structures. And I think we'll be visiting the bus stops more often than Clear Channel has in the past.
Yeah, can you, maybe next time you come, I mean, I took pictures of my benches, but I mean, this one was pretty gaudy. I don't know what your benches look like, but maybe you can bring a, next council meeting, you can bring a picture or two of your benches.
Sure, absolutely. And we're offering to the city, we could paint them any color that the city wanted, and there are several designs to choose from. So whatever fits in, well, the city of Seal Beach.
And the city has complete control over what goes on them, right?
Totally. Yeah, absolutely. Absolutely.
Okay.
Okay. No other questions, gentlemen?
Thank you.
All right, Robert.
Thank you, Mayor. First, I'd like to commend staff on bringing this whole issue forward. It really is the Wild West out here, out there with their benches, with these benches. And so I strongly support the whole concept.
Sometimes in here, too.
Just a few details. A lot of my questions were answered, and I appreciate that. I'd like to echo the two points that Ms. Deaton made in that I think we do need the discretion to not have ads in places where the benches are very close to residential areas and they can be seen from homes. On the Hill, there is one example, which is stop number fifty-eight at Balboa and Marlin. It's behind pavilions, but everyone that comes out of the cove sees, there's actually two benches there now, and they can be seen from homes there. So that would be one example on the Hill where I think that if you ask the people in the coves, they probably not like to have the ads.
Cut more into the mic, Robert.
Yes, this is better. But related to that question, if we have benches without ads, who will pay for those benches? Will those be paid by this contractor or will the city have to pay? That would be a question I've had. The second point that Ms. Deaton made had to do with trash cans, and I would strongly echo that and support that. Trash around bus stops is a big problem because people eat and they can't take the food on the bus, and so they dump their food. Our current contract with Clear Channel for the shelters does include trash cans. And in fact, that contract includes emptying trash cans twice a week. I don't know whether they're doing that or not, but that is what the contract specifies. So I would like to see in this contract that we specify that there's a trash can at every stop where there's a bench and that we include in the contract, emptying perhaps once a week. Sound like the vendors made a commitment to go to each bus stop once a week to do cleaning and maintenance, so that really shouldn't cost us that much to do that, and that's really important. The other issue, which is a little bit of a technical issue, and that has to do with removal of benches. There's a section twelve point one and twelve point three that both deal with removal of benches. And twelve point one says the city will bear the cost of relocation of a bus stop due to change in bus stop location, yet section twelve point three says contractor must pay. With the possibility of removing buses on Electric, I think there's four benches there that may need to be removed, so it seems like we might have a little confusion regarding who is financially responsible for removing benches. And this may happen imminently, right after you sign the contract in January, we may have four benches. So I think twelve point one and twelve point three need to be clarified. But overall, yes.
Excuse me, let me interrupt you. Sean, you want to address that?
It's the intention of the contract that the vendor, the contractor, will relocate the bus benches for any reason, so we'll correct that situation in the contract before the next reading comes to council.
Yeah. I think it's a great idea. I'd like to see trash cans and, you know, echo the points that Ms. Deaton made. Thank you very much.
The recommendation from staff on this is, how to conduct the first reading, introduce the ordinance sixteen fourteen granting a citywide bus bench franchise agreement to Coastline Advertising Corp.
I'd like to move approval.
Second. Mr. City Attorney?
Yes, and as part of that ordinance, I'd like to recommend that on Exhibit A, that we clarify the issue on the trash cans, that we actually insert it into this agreement. And then twelve point one, twelve point three, twelve point three will clarify whose responsibility it is to remove the benches. And I think there was one other clerical change to that, so on ten point eleven point nine, there's a typo there, so that will be corrected at the time of second reading.
And are we going to put something in about facing residential homes?
We already have that discretion. It's, um...
Okay, then that's fine, as long as we have that discretion.
Right. I think the city has the full discretion on where to put the advertising, but that certainly shall be the direction. It sounds like it's the direction of the full council. Sean, there's a section on the city's...
Oh, actually, actually, you've only heard from two members of the council on whether we're going to have any advertising in a residential area. We haven't polled the other three yet.
Right.
Okay.
I agree. All right, now we're down at two. How do you two feel? Are you in favor of having no advertising on the bench in a residential area?
Please consider Lamson residential area.
Not a truck.
For undergrounding, too. Carrie, for undergrounding, too?
Sure, why not?
Because then you're not eligible.
Oh, did he? She set me up, Jenelle.
Yes, I did.
I haven't read all the rules yet.
I'm sorry.
Okay, so that's built in, okay, for the second reading, and we'll find that section that gives the city full discretion on where the advertising goes.
Okay, and my motion reflects all of that, Quinn.
Do we need, if we want to poll things like Electric Avenue or Lamson, do we need to pull them out of the contract rather than have them there while for confusion?
You're talking about Exhibit, that shows all the different locations. I'm not sure that was even part of the contract.
Oh, okay.
I think that was just part of the staff report.
Yeah, we can just pull that completely from the staff report and contract, completely out of the document.
And then it'll just be a matter that you'll, the city will agree where the benches can go. And of course, if you put benches in, they're going to want advertising because that's part of the program.
Correct.
Second.
Then I also heard from council, there's a consensus you want us to come back on the ninth with a projected or an estimated revenue off the advertising as well as photos of proposed benches, is that correct?
I would say so. Maybe you can evaluate where you think you'll put the benches. Then you'll know what we're dealing with.
Has there been a survey taken of how many passengers board the buses at any particular place, so we would know where a bench is more important?
Of course, CTA does have ridership surveys that, for all of their lines.
We can consult that before we make a decision on where to put a bench.
Absolutely.
Well, probably the bus franchiser would want to have input on that, right? As to where they feel they'd be best suited.
Right. That's going to be a tall order to put together before January ninth.
Yeah, I don't...
Then don't take the vacations.
Exactly.
So shall we make the announcement that all of City Hall except Sean is going to be off?
Public works is open.
Be one light upstairs, yeah.
All right, so what are we asking staff to do?
We've got it all covered.
Couple of weeks.
Sean, everything is okay?
Yeah.
They'll do what they can do.
Absolutely.
All right.
With the agreement of the council, then we can bring it back on the twenty-third of January, which will give us some extra time to fold all of that in.
That would be fine, yeah.
Thank you.
All right, now...
And so there will be a change. Part of the direction was to have a public hearing on January ninth. We'll change that to January twenty-third, and staff will give the notice.
And that's all folded into my motion, too.
Okay.
All right, both.
Sure vote, yes.
Five oh.
As part of that ordinance, I'll read the title of the ordinance. Ordinance number sixteen fourteen, an ordinance of the city of Seal Beach granting a franchise to Coastline Advertising Corporation to install, operate, and maintain bus benches in the city of Seal Beach with all the amendments to Exhibit A. It'll be back for second reading on January twenty-third.
All right. We're moving on to the public hearing, but we haven't one. We have no unfinished and no discontinued business. On new business, we are on to Item K. Mr. City Manager, could we please have a report?
Yes, Mayor. Thank you. Our Assistant City Manager, Sean Crumbie, will present this item for you tonight. Sean?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Council. Item K on the agenda brings forward two items related to the shooting tragedy of October twelfth. The first item is a general policy related to memorials throughout the city. That's Policy two hundred dash twenty-seven. We're asking for adoption of that policy tonight. That policy was written, intentionally written, very broad, and the reason for that was so that when we receive requests for memorials throughout the city, we can apply this policy to any number of situations related to memorials, because those requests come in and they vary in size, amenities, location, any number of things from a plaque to a tree to a grand monument. So we wanted to bring forward a policy where the city can take a look at these requests and put together a plan on how we can gain consensus among the community in participation to see if this is something that the community really wants. The second part of this staff report tonight is that we're asking for approval of a schedule and a process or a methodology related to a memorial for the October twelfth shooting tragedy. Since that tragedy, we've received numerous requests for memorials to be placed in the city. The requests, as you can imagine, vary greatly in scope and size, and so what we have tonight is a schedule and a process so that we can go forward with putting together a memorial. The direction of council was that we would shoot for the memorial to be opened in a ribbon cutting on a one-year anniversary date set on October twelfth of two thousand and twelve. So with that, if this policy is adopted tonight, tomorrow we would kickstart or begin a public input period. That period would last in duration for a period of a month. We have a public input form in the packet. That form would be available at City Hall and on the city's website, and we will encourage residents to fill out that form and turn it into the city. We would encourage residents to turn in forms for all sizes of memorials, large or small, every single input form needs to be considered. We'd like to, on January ninth, appoint a committee, and the sole function of this committee would be to review these public input forms and provide direction upon a concept that would be generated out of these ideas. The ideas would include everything from the location to the size to the amenities to funding ideas, fundraising, and requests from city as far as city contributions. We're recommending that there be two meetings held on January eighteenth and January twenty-fifth by this committee, which would be appointed by the city council. And in the staff report, we have potential community members that could be considered for inclusion on that committee. We also have an application included with the packet, and we encourage anybody who's interested in being on that, serving on that committee, to please fill out the form and volunteer to be on the committee. The month of February, we would go forward, once we receive direction from that committee, and develop just a concept, a conceptual design. We have secured the service of a vendor that has successfully done work for the city in the past. We also have had offers from some members of the public, and we would like to receive help from any and all qualified vendors that would like to participate. After that concept is developed in the month of February, we'd like to take that to the, first to the Parks and Recreation Commission in the month of March, and then have the concept come forward in the month of April to the city council. Following approval of that concept, which would also include estimated cost and funding, a fundraising period would begin. Now, we've already received input from several members of the community that this fundraising period is not long enough, nor is it, they want to get started now. And, you know, we had a presentation from Ms. Molson earlier tonight, but I've had discussions with Mr. Fox, and there are community members that are already kickstarting that process. We would like to say that that's encouraged, but until we have the concept, we won't actually know what's going into the monument. Following that fundraising period, once we're sure that we have adequate funds to do whatever it is that this concept is, however large or small, we would develop construction documents, go through formal bidding process, award construction, and construct so that we can have an opening on the one-year anniversary. As you can see, this is not a lot of time to do this, particularly if the monument has any real size to it or is anything substantial. I would like to highlight that, you know, we have no funds budgeted in our current budget, so really what we're trying to do here also is assess what sort of input we have from the community. So with that, I'm available to answer any questions that you have.
All right. I looked through this, and I would like to see some changes on the application form. We've given a lot of space on certain areas on there that I don't think are necessary, but we don't allow enough, in my opinion, where we really need to give them more room to express themselves. And I will share this with you later on.
Okay.
I have a couple of questions, Sean. Do we need fundraising? I mean, we had talked about perhaps trying to unfold something into the city budget, but now we've tied it into fundraising?
Well, I guess it depends upon the scope of the memorial. If the scope of the memorial turns out to be very small and what the community wants is something that doesn't require funding, then I think we can go forward with something of that size. If the city council decides that that funding is something that the city wants to consider, then we can consider that.
All right. If I could, I think we folded that in the staff report, given the amount of comments we've gotten from the public in terms of community participation, and I think it's in terms of their interest in this project, it gives them the ability to participate in that manner if they choose to. The other thing that I was going to say, the idea that had come forth from, not from me, but from someone else, they thought that if we could have community voting via Internet and via going to the city clerk's office and voting, I'm not quite sure where it
I'm not quite sure where it would fit into the timeline, but it would definitely be somewhere during the committee meetings. So that, let's say that the memorial committee would bring it down to, say, five ideas that they liked. And then we could allow the, much like what they're trying to do on the $50,000, everybody then can vote for the one that they would like. So that's an idea to put in there. I know that council member, Shanks and I have spoken to a number of people in town that all wanted to fundraise. And yet there is also a backlash against the fundraising because what they're worried about is people taking credit and it ending up being about people and being political. And if it could just be something that the city could fund that would be, would be a place to go and remember the loved ones and be a very quiet, sedate area that would be very inexpensive. So I guess the fundraising just threw me a little bit, especially if we end up with $50,000 by the time, I don't know what we're going to do with all this money unless we can apply it to maintenance and stuff, unless we're building a building or something. So anyway, those are just my comments.
Okay. Basically, I agree with Elroy's comments. In other words, but this is a community that has always been free to put its two cents in. And we're very willing to listen to anybody that has to add anything, you know. And it's just that some of us don't think it should overwhelm the seriousness of the problem and be rather a quiet memorial rather than a larger thing that in itself becomes a major item. But that's her, in my opinion. I think the accepting comments from anyone is a good idea. As I say, we don't want it to grow and grow and grow and overwhelm the solemnity, I guess is what I'm trying to say, of the situation and what occurred there. Plus, we would like to have something close to the location of the shooting. So that limits to some extent the north end of the Electric Right-Away Park area. So anyway, taking those things, I think the staff work was good. And your report that you presented to us gives the meaning of what the city wants to have done. So I have no criticism of that. I think you did a very good job, Shaun.
Lord, let me be very clear. I did not in any way say we should curtail anybody's opinions. I think we should bring them all in and then we should allow the whole city to vote on it as well. So I think we should have as much public participation as possible. It's not our memorial. So, I mean, it's the community's memorial.
There's something important to remember, however. It's the same way when you vote for the favorite dancer. A popularity contest is not the best way to select something. And if it comes down to, let's see how many people in the community vote for this one and everybody cheers it on and everybody picks or whatever they do, that isn't necessarily choosing the best monument. It's simply whoever was out there swinging the most pom poms. You get whatever you go after, but it may not be the right way to do it. Also, in reading this, the recommendation is for a policy for memorials, plural. It isn't specifically for this one. And we don't want to lose sight of the fact that we are not, we're not just talking about the one memorial to the shooting. And we need to see something that is going to work for other memorials as well.
I move approval of Policy Number 200-27.
Second.
Please vote. Passes five oh. No, no. Is that in lieu of a payment? Okay. All right, Item L, reorganization of the city council and redevelopment agency. And go ahead, you left the gavel, you may read.
Yes. This is the time to nominate council members to the position of mayor. No second is required. And so the floor is now open for nominations for mayor.
I would like to make a nomination of Michael Levitt for mayor.
Thank you.
Okay. Are there any other nominations? This one, want to make a motion to close?
Nobody wants the job.
Is there a motion to close nominations?
I move you close to nominations.
Okay. At this time, there's one candidate, Michael Levitt. Please vote.
Five oh. I nominate Gary Miller for Mayor Pro 10.
Okay. Any other nominations? Is there a motion to close nominations?
I move nomination to be closed.
Okay, let's, there's one candidate for Mayor Pro 10. Gary Miller, please vote.
Also passes five oh.
Okay, now we can move to the redevelopment agency. Is there a nomination for the Chair of the Redevelopment Agency?
Gordon Shanks.
Okay, are there any other nominations? Is there a motion to close nominations?
To move.
Second.
Do we have one candidate, Gordon Shanks, for Chair of the Redevelopment Agency? Please vote.
Passes five oh.
Do we have one other position that's open right now? It's the selection of the Vice Chair of the Agency.
And nominate Ellery Deaton.
Okay, any other nominations? Is there a motion to close nominations?
Second.
Okay, we have one person nominated for the position of Vice Chair. It's Ellery Deaton. Please vote.
Five oh.
Mr. Mayor, at this time, we'd like to present Mr. Sloan with an outgoing gavel plaque as this year's Chairman of the Redevelopment Agency.
All right, thank you.
And if there is no further business, my last and first official act, then we are adjourned. Do you want to adjourn to 6:30 or 6 o'clock on January 9th?
My recommendation would be beginning the first of the year that we, our standard be 6:30 and then based on subject matter, we can always change it to 6:00 if need be.
Okay, 6:30 it is. Okay.